All right, I'd like to call our regular village board meetings to order. Y'all stand and join me in the public.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, clerks, please call the roll.
Trustee Maravka here. Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Slus.
Here.
Trustee Bowden.
Here.
Trustee Sturba.
Yep.
Trust March.
Yes.
All right, write on the public comments.
That's us. That's us.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry. Lost my train of thought there. Again, Angela Griscoviac, Morgans or Lane. I actually, first of all, wanted to thank you, Mr. March, for reaching out to me after the last meeting to discuss what I did not realize that I was asking a question out of turn. I kind of only followed suit when you answered Mr. Nelson's question.
Great.
I'm sorry that I didn't answer you in private because it was a public comment that I felt still kind of needed to be made on public forums, so I'm just gonna go ahead and go along with what I wanted to ask. So, I just wanted to briefly speak about the question that Ed Nelson asked in one last meeting with regards to if, when trustee Hamm was looking to annex the property, the question was asked if any diligence funds were utilized for use of said annexation and village trustee vacancy seat, and your exact answer was no. Is that still the answer in which you wish to hold to this time?
As far as I'm aware.
Okay, well, I actually hold in my possession the FOIA that I requested.
Okay.
And part of the FOIA, the first page of my FOIA is actually dated March 4th of 2021 this year, where it is actually from Mr. Mars on his legal head, sent to you, carbon copied to Admin, which would be Amy as well, and then carbon copied to Mr. Jim Bartley, which is our other lawyer. And that exact subject matter is the vacancy annexation issue with a confidential memo, which then you stated, Peter, well, not you stated, the lawyer stated attached is the memo we discussed on the vacancy in-office annexation issue. Let me know if you have any questions. And then my cover letter that came from Amy herself stated that, you know, we can share with you the legal gist of our legal counsel's opinion on this matter, which is that, and then it goes on to say this so long, if an annexation petition is filed simultaneously or shortly thereafter, blah, blah, blah. Then there's other memos that come that same day. There's one from Admin to trustee Hamm, carbon copied to you. This is the petition for annexation. Amy then states Kent, here's petition for annexation. I personally don't know any lawyer that's gonna do anything pro bono, and I also find it's a little bit of a conflict of interest. I realize that this is a done deal in this instance. The first meeting I was lied to, second meeting I came to, I heard another lie. As a village paying taxpayer and whatnot, it doesn't sit well with me. And the only other question I have at this time, because I think I've just made my point clear, is that at the present moment on our agenda for tonight, the very first topic for new business is the motion to accept Mr. Gary Hudson to fill the vacated procedure, which I'm totally fine with whomever you wish to choose. My question is, why are we not following Robert's rule of law and why isn't our first agenda point tonight us approving said resignation of Kent Hamm and having the board approve that, just like other resignations in previous times have been an agenda matter? Why are we jumping to the next point of putting somebody into that position and not at least running through and getting a vote on everybody as to do they accept his resignation before receiving somebody?
Do you want to answer that?
On resignations, you know, a lot of boards will bring them to the board, but they're really effective just on their own once they're received by the clerk.
Then why did we follow a different protocol in 2019 when our previous mayor resigned and we had that put on the agenda? Why are we following a different?
I think, did you guys accept it at the last meeting? I thought there was some.
No, it wasn't. I listened to it about 10 times.
Okay.
Literally 10 times.
I can't speak to how, you know.
But you're a lawyer, and I'm sure you're very familiar with Robert's rules of law, which does state a certain order in which things are to be done, and I can actually clarify that.
But I understand that, but what I'm saying is the resignation is effective on its own regardless of whether it's brought to the board, as long as it meets the requirements of law. So, the board doesn't need to accept it for it to be effective. I know that's maybe been the practice in the past, but, you know.
So, there's a reason why we're not allowed to follow the rules now, and there's not a reason why we did something different then, so that's where I'm just, I've been watching. After the last couple of meetings, I have watched countless past meetings. I have researched and researched, and I'm just gonna be honest, in my own mind and heart, I'm really not kind of comfortable with what's going on with our current village board right now, and at least the steps in which they're taking to do things. I am a rule follower, and that's, that's just me. I don't believe in sidestepping anything, even if it's not to my own benefit or somebody else's benefit. I just think that there's an order of things. So, if, I don't know, it just doesn't sit well with me, I'm sorry. And the only other comment I have to ask is that at this time.
Would a motion need to be made?
To accept a resignation?
Right.
No.
Okay. So, at this point, I guess my only other question is, and I understand, Mr. Hudson has, you know, been on other boards previously. I'm not discrediting his abilities or anything, but why would we not ask anybody in-house, those that have tenure, or those that are newly elected that are on this board if they'd like to take some of those positions? Not, obviously, the trustee position, because you guys are all trustees, but why would we not want to see if he would like to be a member of the administer, or if one of you guys would like to be any of those additional positions I feel that we're putting on our newly seated, not elected trustee?
Appreciate your comments, and we are going to reorganize the committees at a future date.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I didn't.
We are gonna reorganize our committees at a future date.
So, then, will that be something that will be publicly notified as to the reorganization?
It always is, yep. It'll be on an agenda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm coming here on a different matter, a happier matter. I would like to propose a mayor's bicycle ride for next year. I think this year's too late in season to organize it, but Chicago Heights had one years ago. The mayor was up front, and it was usually during the week, so like a Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, obviously not on Monday. Maybe mid to late May, early June, kind of kickoff summer. There'd need to be a little support from the village, meaning like, obviously, safety, police in the front, maybe a public works truck in the back, if anybody that couldn't ride that far, just through the neighborhoods in Peatone, and possibly a, like a picnic, like saying, hot dogs, whatever, chips, hot afternoons.
Great idea.
I can get more information for you.
Yeah.
Probably the next meeting, probably want to float that idea.
Great.
Who organized it?
I'm sorry?
Who organized it?
It was through the city of Chicago Heights. There probably need to be some sponsors or donors. They might have had T-shirts made up with, obviously, the name of the event, but first annual, second annual, run of bike riders in town. I think it'd be a great thing to kick off summer.
How far did they ride?
It was only about seven or eight miles, which took about an hour, and you can do that through town. At a pretty easy pace, not that fast. It was all ages.
Why don't you set up an appointment with Amy and come talk about it?
I will.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, may I, I forgot one point I wanted to ask. May I real quick, please? Thank you. All right, sorry. I actually just had one real quick question, and it happened to be on last week's, or last two weeks ago's, topic of voting for not having the clerical position beyond the ballot and being in an appointed position. My only confusion was, and I am literally honestly confused, how is it that we can verbally change the rule for, I realize we're at 4,300, and I believe two residents as of the 2020 census, and that we're not at the 5,000, but we can change how we're voting or not voting that appointing, voting versus appointing, the clerical position? But if we want to change it back, it has to be on a referendum. I guess that's really throwing me. How can we just verbally make a meeting today to stop something, but the only way to make it go back is not the same process, that it would then have to be on a referendum? Why is it not on a referendum to ex-nay it and change it? That's my question.
So, the reason we can do it via a resolution, change it from elected to appointed, is because that's what the Illinois municipal codes says. I don't remember the referendum point about changing back.
It was honestly on it, and it actually also said that that person can be appointed out of village-city limits.
Right.
And there was a discussion with, which I don't understand, if all of you already have to be in village-city limits, why then should we be allowed to appoint anybody on the board outside of village-city limits, a township person, or even Mantino for that matter?
And again, and that's.
Or Monee.
Sure, and that's because that's what the statute says you can do. The board doesn't have to. If they want to restrict it to Peatone residents, they can. But one of the reasons for making the change, that smaller municipalities will often make the change, is because, you know, they don't always have a pool of people who want to take that position, especially, you know, if it's not paid. So, when you have an appointed clerk, they're frequently an employee of the village, they may have more than one duty, not just being clerk anymore, they may do additional things within the office, and so people find that, you know, like other employees, they don't always have to live in town. So, it's no longer, if it's an elected position, absolutely, they have to be from the community. But once it's appointed and there's dual responsibilities, it becomes something that you can treat more like an employment job.
So, funny that you actually said it that way. So, then, let's say, I'm sorry, I'm just gonna use yours as an example. Let's say you decide to resign tomorrow. Does that mean that any person seated in that position no longer has to follow the original Hippocratic oath of living within village limits, that because he's being appointed, I'm using your words right now, that because that person's being appointed, that then they can now be appointed as a trustee outside of village-city limits?
No, so village clerks have their own sections of the Illinois municipal code.
Okay, that's what I was curious about.
Okay, and village trustees, to qualify for office, you have to be a resident, whether you're appointed to fill a vacancy or not.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Anybody else? Is anybody here from the mill at all, want to talk about the mill fest? No? Okay. All right, that's it for public comments, onto the consent agenda. First of all, are there any items that the trustees want to take off of the consent agenda? If not, are there any questions at all from the trustees on the consent agenda items?
Just on the closing of the street.
Yeah, so it's just.
Chief, are you okay with that?
For the mill.
For the mill fest?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
We talked to them, and they can get access now off of Wood Street. The rains don't come heavy.
Okay, so they met with you, and you're happy with their plan?
Yeah, we talked to Bob, talked to the person at the end of Wood Street for this year, and hopefully, they'll stay as dry as it's been.
Okay.
But they're aware, I talked to the organizer for the mill.
Great. That was my only question.
All right, then, I will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion.
It moves by, excuse me, trustee Jones, second by trustee Maravka.
Ro colbo, trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Sturba.
Yes.
All right, add the committee reports. Administrator report.
You have in front of you special event permit application, and it's regarding chalk the law. So, we have two kind of events, special events per our code, one's major and one's minor. To meet, to meet a major special event criteria, one of the issues is road closure. So, initially, we approved this administratively as a minor special event. However, they brought new information forward today that they would like to have some street closure. So, while we can't vote on this today because it's on the agenda, their event is September 11th, our next meeting is September 13th. If there was a consensus that this was good for the community, there, okay, no objections for issues from the board, we'd like to allow them to do that and then ratify it at the next meeting. And you could see where they want to close the street by the cornerstone hobby house area on West Main Street for a few hours, because there's gonna be some artists that would be chopping on the street or sidewalks, and it would just be maybe a little bit dangerous.
Is it gonna be just south, or just west of Metis? It's not gonna be that whole?
Right, okay.
Yeah, so just everybody, this is something that my office is doing as a community event, and originally, we thought they, they just wanted to be sidewalks, and then they came up with an idea, they wanted to actually chalk an obstacle course for kids to, you know, run from drawing to drawing, and so that's why they wanted to close the street by the community, so, just something fun for the community, so. You okay with it, Jim?
Yeah. A week or two, though, we have about 300 cars in front of my shop, so a couple of kids won't bother us.
I'll make a motion? Okay.
Well, we're really just taking a consensus. Does anyone have any objections to the street closure?
No.
All right, we'll bring it back if you need some clarification.
That's all I have.
Public Works report, Bob.
Got a few things here to report. Hometown hero banners are up. Hopefully, everybody got a chance to take a look. They look really good.
Very good.
Start-up call with the application process again, and see where it takes us. West Street is done, turned out real well. You're putting a punch list together, I'll be doing a walkthrough. The only thing we're waiting on is sod. The weather's not real good for sod, so hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll get that going. North and Wilson, kind of, kind of do this backwards than what we usually do in a street project. We're gonna do the driveways and the landscaping first, and then we'll mill the road and do the final surface. So, that's completed now.
Why are you guys gonna do it that way?
It's easier. That's a good way to say it.
Yep.
I continue work with Robinson on a couple storm sewer projects, Alborn and Conranch Street. I know Troy's not here tonight, but we communicated last week on the best approach with those problems. The department, we continue to, got some issues with branch pickup. If a resident has an issue or a question, reach out to the public works department, and I'll point you in the right direction, or check the website for the rules and regs. That's all I have.
What's the biggest issue that you're seeing with branch pickup?
Piles are over this high, a mess, no spacing, just makes our life a little easier when we space it out, so.
When are they gonna pick up the rest of the size on West Street?
Hopefully this week.
There's a lot of big signs laying flat on the grass for two weeks, and it's kind of brutal on it.
Yep. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Thanks, Bob.
Thank you.
Marcy, treasurer's report.
All right, everyone has a copy of the treasurer's report. This is pretty much an average July, which was good. When you compare it to last July and last June, our numbers are significantly up from those down in the dump days. So, we are on the upswing and kind of back to normal, which is a nice thing, based on the financial side. No real major purchases to report, although we did, from capital improvement fund, have purchase of new computers and server and the installation of all of that, so that is what you see there. Otherwise, the general fund expenditures were typical. We did apply for our ARPA funds, which is the federal relief funds coming. We've been approved for $550,000. We're supposedly gonna get half of it soon, so we'll just keep our fingers crossed and wait. But we did do all the process, all the paperwork we needed to do to get that going, so. That's all I got.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Should we not do any better than four tenths of 1%, three tenths of 1%? There's nothing out there that.
We're really restricted what we can put our money in, that's the problem. So, I mean, yeah, there's lots of other things, but we're just restricted. Part of it is our size. Part of it is your municipality. You cannot be playing the stock market with tax dollars.
No.
So, but that's really what's out there right now, I mean.
Yeah, unfortunately, we are restricted to, you know, basically money market funds, and, you know, they're not getting anything right now. How come the one account generated $27,207?
That was a CD cashed out. That's where you see some of the, the way that one is split up, that's where you see one month it'll be way down, and the next month you see a pop like that, because there's a bunch of CDs in there that cash out.
Pretty sad, $10 million generates $200 a day.
Yep, I know. Anything else?
So, thanks, Marcy.
All right.
How about you, chief? Anything for us?
Well, school started, but they're on hot days now, so they're not going until the same time as last week, so I think we have the fair starting, and so there'll be a lot of traffic around the fairgrounds. And Wednesday, they have all the public officials coming for a 9 o'clock opening day. And, and it's about it.
Troy couldn't be here tonight, so he sent a written report. West Street resurfacing projects complete other than punch list items that remain, and completing the sodding the fall. The resurfacing projects, Wilson and North Street, concrete curb and gutter, sidewalks are complete, they worked on driveways today. Plan is to start surface removal and paving next week. Wilmington Road sidewalk, the design is coming along, hoping to get the plan submitted to Will County Department of Transportation for review by next week. Railroad Street parking area, the topo graphic survey is complete, working on processing the topo, right-of-way research and setting up plan sheets. Robinson will be working on the design over the fall. Pavement cores and soil borings are scheduled to occur on Railroad Street and other streetscape streets downtown on August 30th. The Alborn Drive Storm Sewer, currently working on design plans. There's a lot underground, so trying to work the new storm sewer around existing utilities is a challenge we've been facing, as well as trying to identify the locations of the existing utilities through Aqua and other utility companies. Okay, add the mayor's comments, like chief said, Will County's fair is being held this week, Wednesday to Sunday. Hopefully, everybody can get out the fairgrounds and enjoy this great tradition. Bids were opened last Thursday for the Second Street Saloon Demo and Asbestos Abatement. We had a much better response this time. The administrator is reviewing the bids, and hopefully, will bring a recommendation to proceed at the next board meeting. Is that something all right?
Yes.
Yep. An ad for a new code officer has been placed. Public Works is also looking for part-time help for the winter season, so if any residents, you know, know of anybody interested in either of those positions, please contact Bob or Amy for more info. Upland Design is putting the finishing touches on the plan for the downtown streetscape revitalization. It will be distributed to the trustees and placed on our website when it's ready. Just a reminder, everybody, the board has decided to proceed with Phase 1, which is the railroad street parking area between Main and North Street. As we heard Troy say, Robinson Engineering is currently doing the necessary engineering and design to create construction documents. Any decisions on proceeding with future phases, we'll wait until Phase 1 is done, although it's important that we continue with engineering on future phases, because that will enhance our chances of funding future phases with grant money. So, the way grants work is if, if you already have a project designed and engineered, you get more points for that grant, so, you know, just, just showing somebody a pretty picture of a project, these, you know, you don't get a whole lot of points for that. So, anyway, we'll be following closely the proposed federal infrastructure bill to see if we could benefit from any of those funds. Bureau Scouts will be starting their product sales in late September, that'll continue through the end of the year. And just a note about, we did get the census 2020 population data out. The official numbers I saw, it was, we're at 4,150, which were up eight people from 2010. You know, it's not much, but considering the drastic drops in a lot of communities down south, you know, at least we held our own. What's interesting, our households, the number of households increased by over 8%, but our population, you know, is pretty flat, so that means, you know, we have more units, but less people living in each unit, so, for what it's worth, that's where we're at. All right, no old business, new business. Entertain a motion to accept my appointment of Gary Hudson to fill the vacated village trustee seat.
Motion out.
Second.
It moves by trustee Bowden, second by trustee Jones.
Ro colbo, trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
And trustee Sturba.
No.
All right, so at this point here, if you want to come forward, and a clerk will swear you in.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Sure.
I, Gary Hudson.
I, Gary Hudson.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee for the village of Peatone.
Having been appointed to the office of village trustee for the village of Peatone.
County of Will.
County of Will.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
The Illinois compiled statutes.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And the laws and ethics pertaining to municipalities.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the office of village trustee.
Of the office of village trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Here's the picture, please.
All right, item B, motion except mayor appointments of Gary Hudson as member of the administrative oversight committee, chair of the police and public safety committee, and chair of the downtown ad hoc committee. So.
So, I just plugged Gary into the positions that trustee, former trustee Ham was in. And down the road, like I said, you can reorganize that. If any member, you know, wants to serve on a committee or you're tired of serving on a committee, I mean, let me know. And we can move things around. So, I'd like to entertain a motion to accept those appointments.
Motion.
Second.
It moves by Trustee Jones, second by Trustee Maravka.
Roll call vote, Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And Trustee Sterba.
Yes.
Good. Item C, motion to accept Manhattan American Legion Post 935 application to sell raffle tickets at the Will County Fair, August 25th to August 29th, 2021.
I'll motion it.
Clear, second.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Maravka, second by Trustee Sterba.
Roll call vote, Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Sterba.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
And Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And?
Trustee Hudson.
Trustee Hudson. And Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Alright, item D is an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Peotone Village code relative to video gaming. This will be ordinance 21 to 22, and we'll just, Michael, do you wanna give us an overview of why we're doing this?
So the village already allows video gaming, as you know. But the code provisions that relate to that were pretty vague and old. But it did provide authorization, the state acknowledges that you guys allow video gaming. But Amy and I thought it would be advisable to just put a little more specific, specific language in here. It doesn't really change anything that you're currently doing. And it follows the Illinois Video Gaming Act in terms of like the maximum you can charge per terminal. For the sticker is $25, et cetera. But it does give us some, you know, additional things to point to in terms of enforcement, et cetera. Questions?
The 25 bucks is the max, we get.
That's the max. I keep forgetting that. Home rule communities can do like $1,000, but not home rule, it's 25.
There's been some legislation floating around about having non-home rule communities be able to increase that, but...
Right, it can go up to like 250 or something, but right now it's 25. Other questions? But you are getting taxed.
Right. No, they're like ATM machines.
Alright, there's no further discussion. We can entertain a motion to approve ordinance 21, 22.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Maravka, second by Trustee Sterba.
Roll call vote, Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Sterba.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Motion carried.
Item E is ordinance declaring surplus property and authorizing disposal of surplus property. So, this is in, first of all, this will be ordinance 21, 23. This is in reference to material that was taken out of the Second Street Saloon and there's an inventory list there. This is the first step in just getting rid of this, you know, maybe trying to make a little bit of money on it. But first we have to declare surplus so that we can look on there, so.
So how do you think you can do that, like put it on eBay or put it like in maybe newspaper pictures and then people can maybe?
Yeah, so we had a auctioneer look at it and he was not real thrilled, you know, said most of his stuff is, you know, giveaway stuff. There was a few signs and stuff that made it so, you know, we are going to, there's an auction site that we can put stuff up on.
I think it'd be kind of cool for like the people of the village to be able to, like the older people that have gone in there and had it.
Yeah.
Do we have to auction it up or can you sell it? Like maybe like?
We have to auction it, so we can get the highest bid.
Well, if we can get pictures of it and put it on like the village website or something, they have to get a sign, like a silent bid.
Right.
You do it that way.
There's some flexibility.
Yeah.
Yeah, because then you can keep the residents, you know, to bid on it, someone doesn't bid on it, then.
Yeah.
Put it on an auction site, I'm sure it's gonna cost money or something, they want a percentage and you post the stuff on the lists.
Yeah, so we'll figure it out. Right now, it's just sitting in one of those Brad's faces and... But anyway, so we gotta declare it surplus so we can just follow.
Motion out. Is there an ordinance or files?
21, 23.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Maravka, second by Trustee Sterba.
Roll call vote, Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Sterba.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Alright, item F, discuss allowable zoning districts for tattoo shops and possibly, and the possibility of expanding the allowable zoning category. So, the reason that we wanna talk about this tonight is we've gotten a couple of inquiries about, I don't know, you know, tattoo parlors sounds awful, but, you know, places that do tattoos. Also, a place that does, you know, the cosmetic tattoos, you know, they do eyebrows or eyeliner or something like that. So anyway, back in the 90s, the village passed an ordinance that says those type of shops could only be in industrial district with a variance, you know, so, or special use, I believe it was special use. So that kind of eliminates, you know, there's really, that was just kind of our way to say you don't want it anywhere. You know, times have changed over the last 30 years. They're more mainstream now. And I guess I wanted to talk to the board, you know, would you rather see a tattoo shop or a vacant building downtown, you know, so it's...
I'm for a tattoo shop.
Okay.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't see any problem with that.
Yeah.
If they add piercings, that'd be amazing too.
Yeah.
Pierceings and things like that.
Right.
Probably get an ice cream that you're...
Most of the ice people I ever met have tattoos.
Yeah.
I have one problem with it. Having a tattoo shop directly across the street, two bars.
There's state laws for that. You can't tattoo anyone if they've been drinking.
Do they apply that?
No. If they get caught, then the tattoo shop gets shut down.
Because that's my concern. I mean, you have young people, all of a sudden they have YouTube many, and then, oh, that tattoo sounds like a great idea. And the next morning they wake up and they're like, oh my God, what did I do?
Does it, does it only have to be downtown or?
Oh, no, I mean, we can, you know, this would go to the planning zoning and, you know, we'd probably say it'd be in business, you know, B1 or B2, or, you know, we got to figure out.
Even Route 50 might be a good area too, because it's more.
I'm not against the tattoo, but just the location, it's just, who hasn't woke up the next morning and said, what did I do last night? What did I say?
I mean, I got, I got a lot of them. I mean, I've never, I've never woke up the next morning. I mean, there's a lot of tattoo shops. You go to like down in Florida and like Tennessee, I gave it to say Chicago, like the one I go to in Mission Park. I mean, nice place, you walk in there, people are nice, the guy's nice. A lot of them, like a lot of them people go out to hang out with or go hang out at and stuff like that to kind of, you know, relax and stuff. You know, and their friends get tattooed and stuff. A lot of them are a lot more, you know, a lot more mainstream. People are like welcoming than what they, you know, perceived as back 20 years ago.
Yeah, so what I'm hearing is that nobody has any strong objections and so I think we'll refer this to fighting zoning. Right, that'd be the next step? Yep. Figure out what categories they would fit into, so. Alright. Alright, questions in the press? I don't see anybody here. Any other correspondence or communications? Anybody have anybody on the board?
We're gonna have our third blood drive on October 27th at 11 to 5. We had a pretty successful first two, so hopefully we'll keep that going.
And you can sign up at redcross.org, you have it, or I think that's what it is.
Red Cross Blood Drive.
Yeah, redcrossblood.org. So that's gonna be at the Legion. Anybody else?
I have a question. When you were talking about having routes and engineering and all proceeding with the engineering stuff, does that qualify as what they would refer to as a shovel-ready project?
Basically, yeah.
I know that was a bump in the past and you don't have anything.
Right.
You're out of money, but.
Right. Yeah, it makes a big difference if you actually have a set of construction documents or you set a piece of paper with, this is what we want to do, you know. So. Okay. Amy, have you had any qualified code candidates apply yet?
No, they, the ads went out to a multitude of professional organizations, the newspapers, online on Thursday, last Thursday, so. It's open until it's filled.
Who's filling the role now?
Me.
You? And all the other things you're doing?
And Bob, it was helping me today, Bill, the chief was helping, so we're all trying to just kind of fill the gap, but we definitely need somebody.
It's an important position.
Yes.
Alright, if there's nothing else, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Moved by Trustee Maravka, second by Trustee Sterba.
Roll call vote, Trustee Maravka.
Yes.
Trustee Sterba.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Alright. The fair.